For TV, there were members of the media in the audience. If anybody would like a copy of this meeting, please let any of the school committee members know and we will take care of it for you. First off, I'd like to say welcome to Jim Legor and congratulations. Nice job. And Joe Marias, congratulations on your reelection. It's great to have the both of you here. So, thank you. First agenda item is the reorganization of the school committee and the first position is the election of the chairperson. Do we have any nominations, please? Joe?
Like, if the committee's in agreement, I'd like to nominate you to be chairman again this year. Over the course of the past year, you've helped set a positive tone for this board, whether it's bringing in students or staff to recognize them for all the great work that's happening throughout the district or during the senior week opting out of speaking at the event so that the focus can be on the students where it should be. You've really helped set a positive tone for the board and obviously over the course of the next year, there's going to be a lot of changes and I think having some continuity on this board would be beneficial. So, I'd like to make a motion for Mike Walsh to be chairman again this year.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next position is the election of the vice chairperson. Jen?
I could probably just echo everything that you just said, Joe, about Mike in making a nomination for Joe Marias to be our vice chairman. It's interesting how the model often does go one year at a time and it seems like sometimes you just get your momentum going and that year is up and it's time to shift and make a change. And we have a lot of changes going on in the district right now and I do think we have a lot of positive momentum. I think, Joe, you've been instrumental and a leader in so many different areas on the school committee and it would be great to see that continue with you as our vice chairman, if the committee would support that nomination.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
No.
It was not unanimous.
No. Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't vote.
Is there another option?
I'm sorry. You didn't vote. Okay. Yep. Okay. Next is the...
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
Are you opposed?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. And next is the election of the secretary. Bob and I had some discussion about this earlier. I'd like to nominate Kevin to be the new secretary of the Milford School Committee.
I can second that motion.
You don't get a vote, Bob. Nice try.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next agenda item is approval of minutes. As every member had an opportunity to read the minutes. Can I have a motion? Any discussion? A motion to approve. Scott, second by Joe. No, you weren't here?
That wasn't him.
Okay. Jen, all in favor? Announcements, correspondence, and distributions.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had an opportunity to certainly want to echo your comments earlier. Congratulations to the winners of this past Tuesday's election. Jim, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Welcome to the next three years of your Thursdays and many other nights of the week. I did have an opportunity to, over the past week, to attend the Best Buddies Pageant. I just want to recognize Jen Walsh and the many, many, many people that contributed to that event. It was a wonderful event held right here at the high school. If you've never had an opportunity, I think this was their third annual. What an amazing event. The students did just such a great job. All the teacher volunteers. Dr. Tremblay was one of the co-EMCs along with Jason McCord. Very entertaining. We had a couple of judges as well that were faculty. Stephen DeVito was one of ours. Jeremy Falster and then a community member as well that served as judges for it. But, just such an impressive event and really just, it was a wonderful celebration. So, certainly want to congratulate all of the participants as well as thank Alex Forge and as well as, you know, Jennifer Walsh for their phenomenal participation and coordination of really a very large event. I think I ran my phone out of memory taking pictures that night. So, it was really, it was very, very good.
Any other member? Okay. Dr. Tremblay, you're all set?
Oh, yeah. Nothing. Good evening for Chris Knight.
Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here, invitation to speak? Nobody here. Next agenda item is the Milford High School Liaison to the school committee. Welcome.
Hello.
In your name?
Maureen Mickelson.
What would you like to tell us?
So, this week was the week of our NIASC accreditation. In NIASC, representatives and educators from other school districts in New England came to our school for the NIASC peer review. There were sixteen people who visited MHS and they shadowed students, observed teachers, and met with administrators, teachers, students, and parents to discuss our core values for learning, twenty-first century learning expectations, school culture, curriculum, and school community resources for learning. The four days they were here went really well and we have shown them what an outstanding school MHS is. The spring musicals last month and the show was Pippin. Pippin's the story of a young man who's experiencing an existential crisis and throughout the play, he searches for fulfillment and greatness. The character sees things from perspectives of figments of his imagination which allowed cast, crew, and tech to get very creative. So, it had a circus theme with fabulous sets, costumes, and lots of glitter. It was received very well by the audience. It was an overall success. The show's a complex one and MHS Theater Workshop pulled it together wonderfully. Last week was the Best Buddy Sweetheart Pageant, as mentioned before. The pageant was started a couple of years ago by Mrs. Walsh and there were about twenty or so people in it. This year was the boys' year, so they all performed a talent. Some danced, did comedy, and played instruments. The girls participated in theme wear and this year's theme was around the world and they wore hula skirts and even a kilt. Everyone won a different award such as most talented or funniest and the senses of joy and pride on the participants' faces showed that it was a clear success. Our hospitality and tourism and management students recently put on their second annual travel show in the foyer of the auditorium. They have a partnership with a local business, Atlas Travel, and they were asked by them to plan the show. The exhibition featured vendors for various cruise ships such as Princess, Royal Caribbean, and much more. Every student worked with a different vendor and the students put together the whole thing themselves, including marketing, scheduling, catering, and booking the event.
Wow. Any member have any discussion?
I may. First off, thank you so much for coming and as always, you know, giving, for all of our student liaisons that come in, I, you know, certainly applaud you for coming in. I know that sometimes it can be a little bit daunting, being on television, public speaking, and then you have all these folks sitting on the other side of the table for me. So, it can sometimes be a little intimidating. So, I wanted to thank you for coming in and thank you for the ongoing update. I know the only thing that I didn't hear and it may have been that I just missed it, so I apologize if that's the case. It's great to hear all the great things that are going on in the schools. The only thing I didn't hear is I believe the junior prom is tomorrow. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Did you say that?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's at Union Station in Worcester.
Okay.
From six to ten.
Okay. All right. So, certainly just wish everyone a happy prom and certainly be very safe and make as many good decisions as you possibly can. As a parent and a school community member, this is always a very exciting time of year. I always joke for the folks that are new to the school committee, this is some of the best times of being a school community member is over these next twelve weeks or so, graduation and prom. It is also one of the most nerve-wracking because of all the different things. As prom comes up, it's a very exciting time, but sometimes tragedy can strike. So, I'm hopeful and certainly wish everyone a wonderful prom tomorrow and safe as well and good decisions.
Thank you.
Any other member, Joe?
You mentioned the NIASC visit earlier and I apologize. I meant to recognize everyone earlier during the announcement section, but I was really blown away by the turnout from the staff and from the students that Sunday over the weekend when they came in to meet the NIASC committee and just really proud of all the work that you guys have put into it over the course of the last week or so. The high school looks beautiful. I love the big M at the front. It looks fantastic. It really, really pops and I think adds to the look and feel of the school. So, I just wanted to recognize everyone that worked really hard on that.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just to add to that, I'm glad you brought that up and I'm so glad that you brought up the accreditation visit as well. So, we had a team of sixteen, as you mentioned, and we had about sixteen professionals from all around New England that came to visit us. There's a little anxiety around whether or not we'd have school on the first day of the visit because Monday, as you know, the snow that came, I had this concern of having sixteen folks at the Doubletree instead of at Milford High School to do an accreditation. But, it worked out and the students were terrific, the staff, and just to echo, Joe, to your point, I think we had about a hundred percent staff participation from Milford High School on that Sunday visit, which is really significant because these teachers just voluntarily come to that. It's on their own time on a weekend. And just to underscore the point that you made, thank you and my sincere thanks to the students and staff. Students led the, I don't know if you were part of the delegation of students that led the visitors throughout the school and gave tours, but students were very much, were you part of that?
No, but some of my close friends were.
Yeah.
They sat with us at lunch.
They did a terrific job and, you know, among the feedback, you know, as will happen with these reports, is we'll get a detailed report about areas of challenges for the school department to address and areas of success and strength. And among those that was reported out at the closing reception, the closing comments from the chair was just the way the school culture is at Milford High School, the staff, the students, and how impressed the whole team was by the culture that's at this high school. And it's really nice to hear. And so, thanks to you and to your friends for the great work they did representing Milford High School. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other member? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to come in and giving us a report. You did a nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. Next agenda item, Lucy, school improvement plan and family handbook for Shining Star.
Evening, Lucy. Did you have a co-chair coming tonight because it's a little bit later on the agenda or are you? Okay. Just you. So, Mr. Chairman, on here it just says the, oh, it's school improvement plan, but there's actually two separate items. Okay.
So, everybody got a copy of this one thing and all the changes? You just want me to go over the changes really quickly? Okay. So, page seven. Objective one, on technology. We don't currently have Wi-Fi and Internet access in all of our classrooms downstairs in the preschool. We have been assured that this is an initiative of the school so that we will have that next year, which is awesome. Some of our classrooms do have it, which is good because, you know, we'll just move some classes into the others, so we're okay. But, to have it will be great. And a couple of times this year, we've consulted with Sarah Boyle and she's been phenomenal working with our staff. We're going to hopefully do that more often so that we can kind of get where we should be with technology. Objective two, foundations. I know that two preschool teachers are now going to pilot the program along with the elementary schools that have already done it, so we'll be doing that as well. And we'll be using the social emotional learning and approaches to play in learning, like this, new standards that we will implement into our curriculum. So, Kathy Sagala has participated in Train the Trainers. So, she's going to train all the administrators of Milford, so I will participate in that. And then area daycare centers, she'll train all of us here at Milford High School and then she will also train all of our staff on that. So, that's awesome. Objective four, best practices. We are going to develop a curriculum brochure. I know some of the other elementary schools have that, so we will do that for our parents. And then, at the beginning of the school year, I know I had talked to Kevin about this, we I think that because we're getting new teachers, two new teachers next year, and also we have four other inclusion teachers, I think everybody downstairs, including myself, could use a training on IEP writing, just because it's been a long time since we've had a training and a lot of things have changed. And this is an area that is very important for our students and our families and that will be probably one of my main focuses for next year as far as professional development.
Lucy, just a quick question. Is that, I realize that you, and I appreciate the fact that you're doing that and you're implementing that in one of your objectives for your staff, is that something that, I assume you're working with Meg?
Yes.
On that? Is that something that we're also going to introduce district-wide as well? I don't know if it's something that's usually a professional development for all that.
I can answer to that, Scott. You know, it depends on kind of where a particular school or grade level is. So, that will be kind of a rotating training. Sometimes the laws or the regulations or the formatting shifts a little bit and we'll add some training as well. So, at this point, you know, especially when we bring new staff on, we want to provide a lot of support because of legal documents, they're pretty complex, and we want to make sure that we have the same expectations kind of pre-K through twelve.
Right. I'm very, very familiar with the IEP process and the writing and the intricacies and challenges that go into them. It was a question of are we providing? I love the fact that you're doing it. My ask is, are we doing a similar type of refresher in professional development throughout the district on an ongoing basis?
Yes. The answer to that question is yes. The short answer.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
The good thing is, we do have some people in the district who are really great at it. So, we do have the resources. Now, we just have to find the time. And the other part, to your point before, for preschool, our goals and objectives are very different than the other schools and that's the area that I think we have to focus on, just because the nature of the disabilities has changed quite a bit since even I started. So, I think we just kind of have to...
Refresh.
Yes, exactly. So, again, that's a main goal. On page eight, objective two. I mean, this is basically just holding monthly meetings with teaching staff. We do have staff meetings, but usually it's during contractual time, which is not enough time. Distribute meeting notes and other relevant findings to staff. Creating and developing research questions we would like to answer with data and then develop curriculum maps for math and EELA. A lot of the things we do are not really data-driven downstairs. I think we have to focus more on that because we kind of go with instincts and gut and just kind of observing the kids. But, I think if we're really looking at different learning styles, we have to start collecting more data. We do it for some of our children with special needs and it does glean a lot of information. I think if we do it for all of our children that we can really focus again on our goals and objectives for every student that's learning down there. So, that's just one other thing. Page nine. I think I've spoken to you, I know I've spoken to you about this every time I come before the board. Our program offerings are always changing this year. Jen, I think I told you this, they've changed drastically this year. So, we have similar numbers, but the ages of our students this year at registration was very different than in all of our other years past. Typically, we fill our three-year program, our three-year-olds, and we have four sessions. This year, we only had enough students that are three years old coming into preschool for two sessions. And then, we have full year, full-day programs, Tuesdays and Thursdays, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We were going to have one teacher to do that and it turned out that we have to have two classrooms of that. So, we have four full-day programs. So, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, two classes of those and then a full-day program. So, we were not expecting that. We had less three-year-olds this year and more new families coming in with four-year-olds, which has never happened before. So, we were able to shift things around and we just won't have the younger students like we did in the past. Not a bad thing. Objective two, team chairperson to attend individual transition meetings for students with moderate to severe special needs. So, when we get referrals from early intervention, if we have students that are referred, any student that's referred to us, there is a transition meeting that EI holds, the early intervention holds. It's a ninety-day transition meeting, meaning ninety days before they come to preschool, there's a transition meeting between early intervention staff and Shining Star staff. In the past, we haven't had the time for anybody to go to someone's home to do the transition meeting. But, what we have been doing is for students with significant needs, we will send somebody that's part of the team just to go and get some information before they start, before we start the evaluation process. I think with a team chairperson, we'll be able to get out to more families for students with significant special needs. And based on the referrals that we are getting, we are seeing an increase in the number of students with significant special needs. In the past, you know, we kind of go through years where we have a lot of students with speech delays and maybe one developmental delay. This year, we have quite a few that have significant needs. So, that's going to be a big change for us next year. And thank you for the team chairperson. That's going to help. Objective three, this is best practice, but I wanted to put it in here. Some of our teachers are really great at, you know, celebrating the cultural diversities in our families. We have families that come in and talk about their different traditions. We will talk about this as a group and hopefully all of the teachers across Shining Star will be able to do this. And then, I think, oh, page ten, objective one, NEYC, so our accreditation. We will be, we will have to reaccred, our reaccreditation process is going to start in January of 2017 because it expires. Our current accreditation expires in January of 2018. So, we will start this time next year. And as you know, just from doing NIASC, this is a huge process for us, but we'll worry about it for next year. Professional development will be offered, I know, taking a page from Craig's book, when he does professional development, he has his staff do professional development for the teachers and I would like to do that as well. I know, for instance, our occupational therapist has done brain gym for some of the schools. So, whatever anybody's area of expertise is, we'll have them just kind of learn from each other. And then, the last thing I believe is going to be on everybody's school improvement plan, the district is required to have a multi-hazard plan. We will participate in the development of that plan. I think we've kind of already started. We've done the basic first steps and so we have the basics already in place.
That's going to be a huge, complex undertaking as well, across the district and across all the schools.
Yes. So, we already have started, we've already started putting our own teams together for that. So, I know all of the other districts, all of the other schools have to do that as well.
Absolutely.
That's going to be a fun plan. I'm looking forward to that. And then, on the handbook, nothing has changed in the handbook except, oh, did you want me to not go on the handbook? Sorry.
I gave you that darting look.
That's what we were just talking about.
Just to think of a separate items for the purpose of the school committee development.
Oh, okay, yes.
So, if you don't mind, just let the committee do their business with that.
Okay.
First, does any school committee member have any questions or discussion about the improvement plan?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, well, first of all, you touched on so many areas that are all so important from the social emotional development through the curriculum. And I love the idea of a curriculum brochure. I don't think we can give parents enough information about the good things that we're doing and especially at preschool where parents have a lot of different choices. It's not just as easy as my child goes to my district school. So, I think to really highlight and showcase the great things you're doing is, that'll be really, really helpful. And I guess just one question I had, when you think about the Internet and so if you really had Internet access up and running at Shining Star all the time, what are some of the programs that you found really valuable for the pre-K students?
I think, well, some of our, some of the social skills trainings, like a lot of the supplemental, like CDs and, not CDs, but like the programs that are online, we can access those, any of the links to some of the lessons. If we're able to access them, then we can, it's just an extra tool that we use and the kids love it. Like in one of the classroom, Patty does all of her, Patty Reed, she does a lot of her lessons. You know, you have the big board and the kids sit around and it's very interactive. They can all participate. So, just, they're basic preschool lessons, but they're just supplemental to the programs that we're using.
Do we have access to things like Lexia? I don't even know if that, it goes down to pre-K, but...
Do you use Lexia in pre-K? I know we use it at, we do use it at our elementary schools, our K2s and they do use it at Woodland as well. Geez, I don't think we do it in the pre-K.
I don't think so. Well, it just seems like with the focus on data and some of the different goals that you have and with the expectations, once we have a technology where we want it and you have accessibility and it working, it'll be great to see the scope of what you can actually do with the kids down there. So, I think it's great that we'll have that, the foundation set up for you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, maybe just one comment before you vote. I just wanted to compliment you on your collaboration with Sarah Humiston to accommodate, once again, the Family Network Community Partnership downstairs in that limited space as your program continues to expand and we know there's some challenges with that. And I know you've been very flexible in working with that, so just wanted to acknowledge that publicly to thank you for your cooperation in making that work, once again.
Welcome. We enjoy having them there.
You're a good part of our community, for sure.
Yes.
Any other member? Now, may I have a motion? Scott, second from Joe, all in favor, to accept the improvement plan for the Shining Star.
Thank you.
And now, your handbook.
The handbook is the same. The only update I have was under medical awareness. Judy Dagnes, Director of Nursing, had given us just a piece that was changed, so I updated that and other than that, I did not make any other changes.
Okay. Any discussion? With that, I'll accept the motion. John, second from Joe, all in favor. The family, Shining Star handbook has been accepted.
Thank you very much.
Nice job, Lucy. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks you too.
My daughter's super excited too. She can't wait.
Oh, good. We're excited to have her.
Take care now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucy.
Look out, another one.
Next agenda item is the Middle School East reuse.
Yes. So, we did have a meeting last night. We received the, stick with me on this one, the preliminary final report. That's the way it was worded. Effectively, what it's, you know, without getting into too much of the inertia and I'm happy to share the reports, obviously for public record, these are all public meeting, public and posted meetings that anyone is welcome to attend, any members of the public, including all members of this committee. Effectively, what we're going to be, what has come back from the consultant is, really it's coming down to what we sort of set out towards the beginning, which is either continued use by the town or sale. And the sale has really been narrowed down by the consultant to really two primary focuses. It would either be realistic, would be medical use being the primary one, some sort of medical building. The other one would be corporate office space. Housing was effectively removed from the table, just not feasible and deemed by the consultant and recognized by the consultant as being highly unlikely. Town and municipal use, there are a number of different factors and this is the reason why it's the preliminary final report. We will have sort of our final recommendation that will be provided to the Board of Selectmen as they're the ones who put together the committee. There are some questions and concerns around, and John, you're probably going to be able to speak to this a little bit better because it was actually with regards to the two primary pieces, and this is what the consultant has come back with, is the wording is regardless of what is used with the building, there is a cost. There's a cost that needs to be done, there's, and there's going to be some renovations that would need to be done. The less, the lower cost option, and I want to put it, I want to make sure that I'm very clear on lower cost. Lower cost is still hundreds of thousands, potentially millions of dollars. And one of the things that the consultant came back and said was that we've done a, they've done a thorough review of the building at a high level. They've not gone through and for lack of a better term, sort of poked at the walls to see what's behind it. They've not gone through and done asbestos tests to see what's asbestos and what's not. They've not, that's not what they were charged with. So, part of what we're going to be formulating is a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that with either of these two options, that there's further investigation to dig down into that if we were to retain, if the town were to retain the building. And that would obviously apply to this board as well. And that would obviously apply to this board as well. I know there's been previous discussion of potentially, you know, changing from or potentially not declaring this as, as surplus. That there's additional costs that would go with that and just review and have, again, hiring a more specialized engineering team to come in and kind of dig a little bit further in. Part of what the challenge is, and this is what I was, I was saying to John, I was saying that John may be able to give a little bit more insight on this, is if you were to change the occupancy, and this is the occupancy piece, if you change the occupancy of the building. So there's two things that would require a total code upgrade, and John, keep me honest on this because this is your world, not mine. Okay? To do a full code upgrade and bring the, and to be required to effectively build, bring the entire building up to code, there are two things that would trigger that. One would be a substantive, would be an investment in the building and alterations to the actual building up to, I believe it's thirty percent of the value of the building.
Well, let me just interrupt you there, Scott. That's, that's with regard to handicap accessibility.
Yes.
Yomar, you were started off more on the line of building use group.
Yep.
So right now it's an educational use group?
Yes.
With.
I was going there next.
Oh, I thought that's where you were starting.
No, I was going there next.
No, so then, well, I'll switch gears to accessibility.
Yep.
If you're gonna spend more than thirty percent of the actual cash value of the building on any repairs, even remaining an educational use group, then it needs to come up to full compliance with Architectural Access Board Accessibility.
Right.
Regulations, yeah. I'm sorry.
No, and that's exactly what he said. That's what I'm.
I'm sorry, which avenue you're going.
Nope, that was the first one I was gonna talk about. So what the consultant is saying is, is that's probably not likely to happen. And the reason why is because it would, there's, I guess there's multiple versions of what you can use for the value of the building. And I put it in air quotes for a reason. One of the things the consultant said was is the value of the building, if it's not up for sale, it could be what's listed as the replacement value of the building, which is gonna be far more than, that doesn't mean it's necessarily the market value or what it would sell for. You could sell the building for a dollar. That doesn't mean thirty cents is thirty. If you change a light bulb, it's more than thirty percent. That's not the case. It's, this is, these are, these are his opinions. I want to be clear, not mine. So he said, he believes that that's probably less concerning. The bigger piece that's sort of an if, it's not a, it's, it's an unknown, is the occupancy changes. So when, so the building is approximately seventy thousand square feet. In speaking with the schools, speaking with Bob, speaking with Town Hall, I think speaking with you as well, John, of what the potential space uses are, retaining the building for municipal slash school use, for moving of administrative offices, it effectively equated to about twelve thousand square feet of the seventy thousand square foot built would be, would be what was put out there. The question is, is it is, is what would be the determination of change in occupancy? So the other part of that piece would be, you could use the other pieces of that space if you wanted to use it for educational use. As an example, a college wanted to come in and run classes there, you wanted to use training. There's a case that the consultant says could be, believes could be made that says it's still similar use because it's still being used for, right now there's administrative and town offices. There are, there's administrative offices in there because there's a principal and there's an assistant principal and there's specialized departments in there. And they're still be being used for educational purposes. He said, you could make that case. It doesn't mean it's going to get approved. You could, there could also be a case made that says that would quantify as an occupancy change, which would require bringing the building up to the full code that John was talking about. Am I reasonably accurate here?
No, you're pretty much dead accurate there.
Perfect.
It's, it's currently a use group, E, educational use group.
Yep.
Accessory uses, the assembly use being the gym, the cafeteria, the business use sort of being the administration areas, as you said. To change that, to change that use group requires full compliance with all of today's building codes for that use group. Depends on the use group, how much work would need to be done. And then parallel to that would be if, if you're gonna change a use group and how much work is being done, does that now trigger the thirty percent on the architectural access board regulations? But backing up a little bit, if it were to stay an educational use group and really no changes made to it, really no changes need to be made to it. If, if you put in a, a different educational use group, whether it was leased to another organization, possibly a community college or something like that, there are no modifications that inherently need to be made. If there's no ramp into the building now, it's, it's already a public space. There doesn't need to be a ramp into the building. I saw that. I had a chance to review and I think you have another document since this. I have the final report executive summary. And I went through and I made, you know, dozens of notes and questions, but.
There was an updated version that came out last night.
That's what I thought. I, I obviously wasn't there last night, but, but that's one of the things I saw in there. So note, if you're gonna keep the use the same, there are no changes that need to be made inherently other than if the infrastructure is not there for IT, which we know that we haven't put anything into that. But no inherent use, upgrades need to be made.
Right.
And then you go, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna bring in one office? Are you gonna, how much of it is gonna stay educational? How is the gym gonna be used? How's the, how's the cafeteria? There's, there's so many what-ifs that I couldn't, I couldn't really make a statement to any one particular combination right now.
Yep.
And it's something, you know, when you mention the change of use, that's the change of use. You know, that's a determination that, you know, in my day job as building commissioner is.
It's for your choice. Yeah, they, they mentioned that last night.
But it's done with, you know, an existing building analysis and it's presented by an architect or an engineer. It's, it's not me just flipping a coin and, and saying yea or nay.
I think it's the same use.
Yeah, yeah, it might be.
Maybe, it may be.
There's such a variable of scenarios that, but your summary is, is, is accurate.
Yeah, and, and thank you, John. And so one of the things that they did come back and say is, is to your point, John, there's, there's nothing, if we were to maintain its existing piece, and, and he's kind of talked about all this. There are so many what-if scenarios that he wasn't able to say definitively, by the way, yes, it would do this, yes, it would not do that. To, as John just said, reiterated again, there's so many potential. You put one doctor's office in there, even if we put school administration in other schools, you put one doctor's office in there, that may very well just be enough to say, nope, you're done. Change in occupancy, gotta change everything. They did say, what he did say with the evaluation of the building is, is the plumbing is functional. The heating is mostly functional. There is no cooling. There's no air conditioning in the building. The heating ventilation unit in the gym has been disconnected, so it is not working. There are some fire, there are some recommendations that if you were to, if, that he put in there that said it's, it's a, and forgive me, it's, I believe it's a, a fire ventilation or something of that nature, or a smoke, a smoke ventilation system that would be recommended to be put in. He did say the, again, the electrical system is functional, however, if you were to, if, if the, if the long-term process is to maintain the building in any respect, those are things that would need to be put in. We need to, as John mentioned, with regards to technology, just because it is, it's a seventy-five-year-old building.
Yeah, and if I could just interrupt on the electrical, you're right. It's serviceable for now. It's service, it's serviceable as is. But you made the point, there is no air conditioning. It, it probably won't handle the load of.
Right.
Air conditioning. And, and then, you know, along that lines, what use would you use it during the warm months if there is no air conditioning? So there's, just again, so many what-ifs and variables.
Yeah, there's so many what-ifs and variables. So essentially, the, the long and the short of it is, is it's coming down to, really it's the, there's two possible viable options of corporate off, of commercial office space or medicals, or, or medical office space if the building were to be sold. Or if the building were to be retained for municipal use. And I use municipal in the broadest term, that includes school. What he, what the consultant is effectively saying is there are costs that are gonna be associated with that. There's, there's, there's going to be, need to be an investment in that building. He's not able to quantify what those costs are, to John's point earlier, is there's so many different variables. It could be as little, as little as some number of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that is also gonna vary greatly because as soon as they poke into the first wall to try and do some renovations or try and do something, it may come back and be like, oh, my gosh, we found all these, we found all these problems. And I will get the youth center as a perfect example. Youth Center's been a phenomenal project, but there's been, there's been some hurdles that have come across and all of a sudden, you know, you pull back one wall and you find something that was unexpected. And that happens in any type of modification or renovation of older buildings. Best case scenario, it may not be, but I want, that was, th, these are some of, a lot of the discussion. The meeting was about two hours last night, just so you know. And on average, these meetings are about forty-five minutes to an hour. This is about two hours of discussion last night. So we're getting very near to the end where we'll have the final proposal. What I would anticipate is gonna be part of that final proposal is actually with either option, would, would be a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that they actually hire a firm that would come in, that would come in and do the more deep structural looking at what, and I'm giving the example of asbestos. Come in and do some of those pieces and there are costs that would be associated that would, that would exceed what the, what the funding that's available for this committee at the time. So I'll kind of pause there. If anybody has any questions or, or thoughts.
Joe?
Yeah, so when they mentioned that medical and commercial use were viable options, did they provide any type of market analysis or review the inventory that's in town today to determine if they were, if that's a true need?
Yep.
Did they provide that analysis?
Yes.
And what did that, and what did that analysis say?
What it said is, is that they are, forgive me, I don't have the exact numbers. What they're saying is, is within this geographic region, medical office space is actually, is actually, new medical office space that is opening up and being built is ninety-seven percent, is being, I believe it was ni, I believe the number was ninety-seven percent occupied. Growth every year. So it's, it's very substantial, very significant growth. And that's outside of just Milford Hospital. That's, that's this geographic reason. So there is a need for it. That doesn't mean that he has a likely buyer. It doesn't mean any of those things. It just says, hey, I've kind of looked at it and, and here's what the market analysis looks like. And it's, yeah, we believe that there's a need for medical office space and that this building is, it would be potentially cost benefit or, or, or financially viable for a medical office to come in and convert this space the way the building is currently situated. Same with commercial office space. But it would depend on, it doesn't mean he's got a buyer. It doesn't mean he said, oh, yeah, there's three companies that came forward and said, we wanna do this. That's not what he said. What he said was is office, medical office space is growing up pretty quickly as it builds.
Yeah, and if I can just add to that, just reading from the previous report, not the most recent, but with regard to specialized medical office space, it, it does say there's a relatively small number of potential entities that will be seeking facilities of this type in within Milford and out the nearby area. So there's, there's a, there's a market, but.
It's not gigantic.
Relatively small.
Yeah, you gotta take into consideration this presently. And there's one under construction right now and there's gonna be another one on the corner of sixteen and one forty.
Yep.
You know, so there's gonna be two brand new ones.
And, and I will tell you, in the final, in the preliminary final, second version preliminary final report.
Yesterday, yesterday's.
Last night's report said, actually came forward and said, by the way, if you were to do that and there are many scenarios that would actually require the town potentially to do some of those renovations prior to selling them, where there would be, so that's where they said, by the way, that is substantial cost. Which is why they would actually say just, you can sell, you may sell the building for the lessened difference. So effectively, the town ends up paying for it either way, right? So if you can sell the building, and I'm gonna make up numbers, if you can sell the building for a hundred dollars without, with doing the renovations, without doing the renovations, you may only be able to, if there's fifty dollars for the renovations that need to get done, you may only sell the building for fifty dollars. So effectively, the money come.
Well, and effectively, you're much better off selling it because as a municipality, you're gonna do, use.
Correct. It's gonna go the highest bidder.
Public bidding process.
No question.
Prevail in wage.
And that was brought up as well.
Not on the private industry, yeah.
Yep. It was, that was brought up as well, that their recommendation was actually sell it for the lower dollar amount, just to get it off.
Absolutely.
So that you're, well, that way you're not paying the higher renovation cost. But they did say the costs are substantial on that side of it, if we were to maintain, if we were to either become landlords or sell. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Scott, I, I don't go to these meetings and I've watched a couple of them. What is like the consensus of everybody in this group? What are they kind of leaning towards or whispering in each other's ears, hey, maybe we do this, maybe we do this? Do you have any idea where everyone's leaning towards?
Yeah, so I, I would tell you, there's, the feedback in the room and the discussion in the room is very robust, actually, for both options. Just having sat through with, I think, one exception, every one of these meetings, I think I missed one. The, it, it really is split in the room. And it's split, and it's, and it's very healthy discussion for actually both potential options. There's pros and, pros and cons to both. So I, I would be, I, I probably wouldn't be in a position where I'd feel comfortable saying, eh, we're kind of leaning towards one recommendation versus another. What kind of came out of last night's meeting is, is what's going to likely go forward to the Board of Selectmen is actually a recommendation with both options, saying, listen, you told us to look at these. Here are the two potential options. What we recommend is, is that if we're going to explore both of, that the Board of Selectmen wants to explore both of them, that you actually contract a, a further engineering company to do a further deep, if you were to maintain the building, further deep dive to understand before you make a decision between the two. Because it may be that they come back and say, by the way, to do some of these renovations, to ba, to make the building viable for a long term because there are some things, yes, functionality wise, it's, it's okay for right now, but some of the things that we just talked about, John, that, that would need to get done, you've gotta hire a contractor to come in and kind of take a look and do that evaluation because they may come back and go, well, it's two hundred thousand dollars worth of work, which is far different than it's, by the way, it's three million dollars worth of work. And we won't know that. So that's why it's, I would say it's probably more likely that we come back and say, there, these are, here are the two viable options. Hire, if you're considering option one, hire, we recommend that you hire this consulting company, hire another, hire a consulting company and engineering company and all these different contractors to come in and, and really do the deep, 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 deep dive into the nitty-gritty and the nuts and bolts of the building of what that potential, of what that cost is going to be. If you're choosing to sell, here's what we recommend. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
First of all, thank you for the summary. That's a lot. I know at one of the last meetings we talked about, so even before, I guess we get to the point of this going to the Board of Selectmen, we still have the decision before us, right? To decide whether or not we want to maintain that building as part of the school department's inventory or we feel there's no need. So I know we talked at the last meeting about possibly getting some feedback from the high school and from all of you who work here every day in terms of what your thoughts are of the usefulness of that building and potential, you know, uses for it and, and how it could either add to the district, supplement what's happening. And at some point, whether it's now, you know, you had a comment to make too, we should probably talk about that because it seems like your, the preliminary report, eventually there's gonna be a final, final report.
Mm-hmm. Probably in May.
In May, okay. And I know we've talked about having, I know the finance committee talked about recognizing a couple of months' worth of maintaining facilities, utilities, whatever it needs. But I'm not sure what the appropriate time or when that would be to have that discussion in terms of what, what you guys have found and what you're thinking or what further work we need to do with you so we can all feel confident in whatever our recommendation is as a board.
That's something we're gonna bring up later on in the, in the meeting.
Okay, okay.
But we have addressed it.
Okay, good.
Joe?
I was gonna ask the same question, so we'll, we'll wait till later on in the meeting.
Yeah, same.
I just have two questions, Scott.
Sure.
Now, will we, and I thought, I wasn't being rude, I was digging through my bag.
No, 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 I'm not worried about that.
Report, are we gonna get another report? Will we get this one here or will we get a final?
I'm happy to share with you the documents that were provided to us last night. You're certainly welcome to their public access.
Well, you know how we get that nice package all put together?
That was from them.
Okay.
And I have one from last night as well and I'm happy to provide copies.
For the school committee.
That would be great.
The only other question I have is, out of the original committee that was formed by, I believe at the time was.
Dino.
Dino, Selectmen at the time, how many members are left on that committee and serving actively? And not to put you on the spot, just a rough idea.
No, no, that's fine. I believe the only changes have been the, there were three community members that were initially named to it and I believe.
It was damn small, was one.
Yep, I believe two of them have changed. And other than that, everyone else is exactly the same.
But the spots are filled.
Yes, they've been refilled by other community members.
Okay.
But other than that, the community, the, the committee has remained intact.
Twenty-one members originally?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So out of the thirteen, you have ten that have been there since the very, very beginning.
Eleven, because one community member didn't change.
Okay. That's good. That's great.
Yep. So two of the three community members, so eleven out of thirteen have remained consistent. Two for, I, I don't know why. Have either chosen or time-wise or for whatever reason are no longer serving, but those spots were filled and, and those members are attending meetings.
Great. That's good to hear. Any other member? Okay, thank you very much.
My pleasure. And I'll provide you the copies.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Next agenda item, reported the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction.
So I have a very quick update for the committee on the two search processes we're undergoing. The first is the Director of Information Technology and Digital Learning. And we had thirty-eight applicants for that, that, that applied for the position. And we went through two screening processes with the help of Dr. Philippow and Selt and re, and reduced the candidate pool to seven candidates that we have interviewed over the last two evenings. I wanna recognize Sarah Boyle, who's our Technology Integration Teacher, Jill Calery, who some of you may know, Jonathan Capice, who's our Technology Team Technician, Craig Consigli, Principal of Woodland Elementary School, John Erickson, School Committee Member, Keith McGrath, who's a community member, Dan Nelson, High School Technology Teacher, Kathy Perry, Assistant Superintendent, Steve Weber, Technology Integration Teacher, and Matt Sekili, who's another community member. Who, we, we spent about nine hours vetting a group of seven candidates. And we narrowed that group down to four who are gonna invite back to the district next week to do a site visit. And I'll meet with building administrators, the tech team, the central office administration, some of our teachers, just to get a better sense of, of the candidates. And I, and I feel like we have a very viable pool of, we'll call them semifinalists at this point. I don't know if Joe or John, you wanna comment on kind of the quality of the pool or?
Um, so I'll, I'll speak first. So with these, these candidates that came through, they are all, they're all brilliant people. They're, they all have their right aspects of what they're looking for. But the four that we've picked, just a couple of them just blew our minds away. And this whole process, I've never done before. And I, and I'm glad Kevin actually had us in it. It's, it's amazing what you can learn from these people too. And it's, it's, I've enjoyed every moment of it. And the four that we've got down, I mean, we'll obviously pick one, but I think these guys, they're a really good, good crew.
Yeah, I'll just, I'd just like to add or reiterate that we had seven candidates that had amazing qualifications and credentials. I'd, I'd say we'd all agree that any of the seven would, could probably perform at a higher level. So we're fortunate to have, you know, four that stood out even above that. And, you know, I'm excited for the process going forward and I think it's gonna be just an incredible benefit to this district.
One, one other thing too, the, the community members that came and volunteered to do it too, they asked.
Fantastic.
Great questions and they were all really good. They helped us out a lot finding these people. And, and, and Selt, they gave great candidates.
And they provided a lot of our questions and kind of some of the structure around the interview process. And that was, that was phenomenally helpful too. And, and Dr. Philippow will be touching base with us throughout the process and we're updating him on kind of how the process is going. He's gonna give us feedback on kind of where we're at. So that's been great as well.
That's fantastic.
Scott? Just a quick question. Just a, so two questions. One, so what's the next step for these final four? Is it a different group that's meeting with them?
So it's, it's some of the same folks, but a number of different folks as well. So we're gonna, Kathy, Craig and I are gonna take another, you know, hard. hard look at all four candidates. The tech team is gonna interact with the candidates again, because they're gonna be the folks that are gonna be working most directly. And again, we're gonna bring principals in, some teachers in, to really just kinda get a sense of their feedback on, on each of the candidates. And, you know, right now, you know, to, you know, Joe and John's point, I, we, I feel like every candidate is eminently qualified, which puts us in a very good position, cause we're really, we're really selecting who we feel like is gonna be the best fit and is gonna be the best, uh, person to really move the district forward.
And then my, my second question is, is, um, can you just, for the benefit of the, I think, the committee as well as for, for anybody in the public, this, this has been, uh, a very lengthy process and, and has not gone well in the past. I'm glad, I think this is a much, I wanna go on record saying, this is a much better process than I think what we've used in the past, and certainly the assistance of school community members and Kevin and Craig and, and the community members that have stepped forward, as well as Dr. Filippo and, and Selt. Can you just give a, a quick, like, what are the backgrounds? Are these guys coming from private industry, are they coming from an educational background, are they coming from higher education, are they doing something similar somewhere else?
I think that, the, the vast, the vast majority, um, and I don't wanna speak to the semifinalists, cause we're not releasing.
No, but just in general.
Yeah.
Of the, of the.
I would say the vast majority of the candidates had either experience at the district level in other school districts, or significant experience in, um, you know, maybe in the charter school setting, or in like some similar educational setting. It, it's funny, cause, uh, Dr. Filippo from Selt was, and Kathy was there for that, was unbelievably impressed with not only the, the number of candidates we, we received, but the, the, the quality and depth of the pool, which, you know, always warms my heart, because you wanna be in a position where you're making a choice among several very qualified people.
Yeah, you don't wanna get one applicant and go, well, I guess you win.
I think, I think it's safe to add that all seven came from an educational background, and, and, uh, if not exclusively, in, in large part.
One percent or another.
Yeah, the majority.
Saying too much.
That's great.
Kevin didn't touch upon, but part of the, um, invite back will be that Dr. Filippo provided us with two case studies. And, um, after they do the interview with the separate groups, we're gonna give them each two case studies that, uh, will require, you know, not only a written sample, but, um, the quality of the answer. So, Dr. Filippo definitely, um, offered to help us with vetting their, uh, written.
I was gonna say, will he be the one evaluating that?
Yes, so we're really excited about that.
He's gonna be, yeah, he'll be part of that process.
That's awesome, that's great. I, I love the fact that he's giving case studies, I think that's fantastic, that's great.
Yeah.
So we'll get a sense of how they're thinking and, and, and get the perspective of a lot of different folks, which I think has been, you know, e- we had eleven people on the committee of the last two nights, and just the questions and the conversation that that generated, and I think the result of the four semifinalists that we have, I think is gonna lead to a very good result. All right, so the second, second process we're involved in is the Woodland Principal Search, and we had forty-two applicants, um, for that process. We did an initial screen down to twenty-four, and we brought a screening committee in, and I wanna just recognize those folks too, cause again, all these, all these, uh, teachers and community members are volunteering their time, and this is above and beyond, and, you know, it's nights, it's after school, it's a tremendous commitment, so I, I do wanna recognize them. Lisa Belinski, Carla Lynch, Joanna Roy, Melissa Kalonin, Stephanie Matthews, Nick Liberto, Eric Ventura, and Christine Dwyer are all faculty members at either Stacy or Woodland. And we wanna get input from both groups, because this person's gonna be their new principal. And then we also had two parents, um, O.C. Mamadou and Jen Bethel, who also, um, served on the screening committee and volunteered their time as well. And, um, we were able to come down to, um, so from forty-two, we went to twenty-four, and now we're down to nine semifinalists, which we'll be interviewing next Monday and Tuesday, and the goal there is to come up with two or three finalists who will, will, will do a site visit, kind of a s- a little bit of a different process, cause we're gonna, we're gonna do, um, a, a site visit and then prob- more than like the site visit to their school as well. The, the, in terms of the candidate pool, again, I was impressed, and I think it speaks to the quality of the Milford Public Schools and the draw of a brand-new building, but we had a, a very high percentage of sitting principals who had applied for this position, so I'm very pleased with the quality of the applicant pool.
Do we have internal applicants that are still involved in that process?
For the semi-fi- you know, I don't wanna answer that question yet, because we haven't gotten everybody.
At least to the twenty-four level.
And then within the twenty-four, yes, yes, yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I thought you had your hand up.
Nope.
No, I just, I, I think to the, and the reason I ask the question is, is, and, and we kind of went through this when we went through the superintendent component too, which is, um, there's sort of the, when we look at outside building principals, there's, that are coming from other school districts, there's sort of two folks that we get, right? So we get the rising stars and those that are rock stars, and just really, really strong and very, very talented, and then you get those that, um, have these glowing letters of recommendation, and candidly are probably not the glowing stars, but they may look from the outside looking in with, it, it's, it's tough to sometimes tell the difference, um, which is why I always ask you about it. And obviously, just as we wanna continue to offer internal growth for, for our existing teachers and administrators, I s- that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, and this one, this one's a little more live and in process, because we just, we just wrapped up yesterday afternoon, and we're still.
And that's fair, I just, I wanna make sure I clarified the reason for my question.
Yeah, 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 it's a fair point, it's a fair point.
Any other member? Thank you, Dr.. Next, agenda item, reported the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry?
Yes, I have for the committee's approval this evening, five warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of three hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor?
Second warrant is in the amount of forty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and seven cents.
Motion from Joe, second by Jim, all in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of one hundred twelve thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents.
By, motion by John, second by Jen, all in favor?
The last warrant is in the amount of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and forty-four cents.
Motion from Joe, second by Scott, all in favor?
And, um, the committee also has, um, a request for professional development course reimbursement, um, reimbursement in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars.
Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor?
The committee also has a list of the latest appointments from our per- previous meeting, and I also have a, um, out-of-state field trip that requires a vote, and I'm gonna ask the committee to approve, um, both the, um, the date of the, uh, field trip to Roger Williams Zoo for the Brookside Kindergarten classes. Four classes will attend together on Thursday, May fifth, with a rain date of May seventeenth.
Motion from Jen, second by Joe, all in favor?
And that's all I have this evening, other than the gift.
Yes, we have a very large gift. We have a gift this evening from the Metro West Health Foundation, um, it's a grant, uh, the purpose is for health and wellness, personal and supplies in the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred. And what this is, is, this is to fund a position.
Right, just to, just to comment on that, I, I wanna credit Judy Dagnes who
Absolutely.
who authored the, uh, the grant for this. This is, provides a wellness nurse to support a number of our wellness initiatives district-wide, so this is a great opportunity for Milford. We're, uh, selected among a number of applicants.
Right.
So, our, you know, kudos to Judy Dagnes for submitting that on our behalf.
Yeah, and actually in my report later on about the Wellness Committee, you'll see it's well-needed, so Judy, nice job, thank you very much. I'll pass that around.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
Could accept?
Yes. Second by Joe, all in favor? Okay. Next agenda item is the subcommittee updates, and what I'd like to do before we talk about the subcommittees, I'd like to put up on the floor for discussion, there are three new subcommittees that I would like to add. And I'll do them one at a time, so that we can have discussion, then we'll vote on them, then we'll go on to the next one. So, in our conversations with the finance committee that night, one of the things that came up was, it would be very helpful if we, um, had open lines of communication all year long. So I think we should set up a subcommittee that will work with the finance committee, and we're gonna call it the Budget Subcommittee. And we'll, we'll appoint some members to that, and their job will be to meet with the finance committee, or meet with the subcommittee of the finance committee, and then report back to us, and if they need to see us as a full committee, then we'll get in, in front of them. So, putting that on the floor, is there anybody that has any discussion?
It's a wonderful idea.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to accept the Budget Committee from Jim, second from Scott, all in favor? So the Budget Committee is in. Okay, the next.
Are you looking to appoint members tonight also, or are they making?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah. Okay, the next one that we think is very important, and we've had very open conversation about it, is the marketing and communication of the Milford Public Schools. It, it's, we've, something we've started, but something we really need to get going on, um, there's members that have a lot of great ideas, and so I think it's important that we, we set up a marketing and communications subcommittee. Any discussion?
Just so I understand, is there a, is there a specific, um, is there a specific charter that we would be giving in specific direction? That is, the full board would be giving to, specifically to that one, um, and direction that we'd want them to go? Or is it just, is it being left somewhat open? Generally, so for instance, the Budget Subcommittee that you just proposed and was just voted in, um, has a very specific directive.
Mm-hmm.
Marketing Communications Subcommittee is, is, is descriptive, but can be perceived as very broad.
No, we have a pretty good idea where we want them to go with it.
Okay, great, so are you gonna, and I apologize, I may have jumped the gun.
No, that's okay.
Have you already talked about, are you gonna talk about what that is?
No, that's fine, no, what we wanna do is, we wanna, one of the things that we talked about is that, um, in the past, if you remember, we felt that one of the issues that we were having with school choice could be, because we're not properly marketing what we're offering in the Milford Public Schools. So it'll be those kinda items that we're gonna really focus ourselves on to, to get out there with the public.
Yeah, I like the idea, it's just I wanna make sure we're giving the, we're giving some direction to the committee as well.
Right, oh, no, 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 absolutely, absolutely. So any other discussion?
Like, if I could just add, it, it's gonna evolve over time, right? So, so initially, I think the, um, the charter is to help formalize a marketing plan for the schools, help improve communication across the district. I know there are a number of parents that have reached out to, to Bob, asking if they could be part of that committee as well, so, but, again, it's gonna evolve over time, but that's the initial.
Okay, so the initial would be to dev- to, um, to, to work with community members and develop a marketing communications strategy for the Milford Public Schools and Milford School Assist, the Milford School Committee, is that fair?
As well as administration, as well as the school committee?
Yeah, I said school, yeah, schools, school committee kind of encompassing.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yeah.
I, 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 I think this is a fantastic idea. Case in point, I had a, a youth, youth sports coach, uh, he coaches seventh and eighth grade athletics at, uh, at the middle school, and he, he reached out to his parents about, you know, their thoughts on bringing their kids to Milford High School, what, what they're going to do or not going to, where they're gonna go, not what they're going to do or not going to do. And, um, a lot of the parents responded what they were going to do and what their, their children's friends were going to do, and what their children's friends' parents' perception was, and there was a lot of replies that just indicated they don't think that the, you know, their fellow parents truly have the correct perception of, of what Milford High School has to offer. So I think this is, you know, just a step in the, the right direction for sure.
Thank you. Jen?
With all the conversation we've had about school choice and marketing perception, um, kind of, I don't know, upgrading how people look at our schools and making sure the right messages get out, I, I do think there's value in the Subcommittee. I think the only thing I just wanna make sure of is that we have some kind of a system of checks and balances. So every time we have a, a Subcommittee, we always end up giving administration more tasks to do. I, I don't, can't think of a policy Subcommittee that you haven't walked out with an extensive list of things that need to be redlined and, and worked, worked at, and, um, I think there are probably some things that could be done in terms of marketing that are really part of what I would consider everyday school life, the way a school communicates out, um, the way that we, um, make sure the parents are aware of things that are happening. I just, I just wanna make sure that we're very mindful with this committee, that we're not asking the school district to take additional steps that will take away from the, the critical work, which is the curriculum, curriculum development, meeting the social, emotional needs of kids. So if we can find ways to embed the work of this committee, um, in, in the good work that people are already doing, I think that's gonna be really important. And I think we just need to be open to the district if we start hearing that we're putting too much. There, there are some people who will pick a different school system, no matter how much we market, and no matter how much we toot our horn and, eh, publicize the wonderful things that are going on, so I wanna make sure we're balanced and that good time is spent on the kids that are here, um, in the classrooms every day too, just as long as we can be careful with it.
Yeah, I would totally agree with that, I mean, the last thing we wanna do is burden, uh, you know, the educators and the administrators to, to be counterproductive, but, you know, something that comes to my mind is just the Subcommittee presenting the messages that they're getting from parents and, and in the community, so that it's not, you know, seven of us calling, I call Bob, you call, uh, principal, just so that it can be a focused, um, channel.
Right.
Eh, eh, you know, eh, in, in part at least.
And, um, we have kind of a, I don't even know what to call it at this point, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a committee, um, that's kind of a cross-district committee right now. They did a lot of the work that put the marketing piece in place at, um, the eighth grade level for the, for the high school choice, and we saw some, we saw some pretty immediate results with that.
Yeah.
Um, it may, it may even work with something like wellness, where we've already got a committee in place that we, we have school-based folks on, that we could have maybe a couple of school committee members, and I, I don't know what your vision is for this entirely, Mike, but that may make sense for those, those school committee members to be kind of, eh, and liaison might be the wrong word, members, you know, however, you know, whatever structures you wanna put in place, but then we don't have kind of redundancies to some degree, and it might work to have, you know, committee members, you know, part of, part of that process.
Okay. Well, and that may also include school councils, where they're usually dying for jobs to do. What can we do, how can we help the school, so that?
Yeah, and that's another viable option as well.
You know, there's only seven people on this committee, right?
And, and I would suggest too, eh, you know, eh, as Joe mentioned before, parents have reached out to me, there are parents who are very active in social media, sometimes working, um, in support of the district, and sometimes working, uh, in sharp contrast to the district and making, uh, things, eh, we should bring those folks in and help them to communicate the message. And I know, Jim, you talked a lot about that in, in your, um, campaign, uh,
Yep.
about, about, you know, brand equity, and the kind of terms you use around there, and I think that's important, to bring in people who may not be so informed and help them to, to use social media, which we may be missing as an element of this, to have parents that are engaged, you know, like you have with the IT, you have parents that really bring in all, another level of, of understanding. Uh, so I just suggest as you develop that, to include parents, or Kevin, if you, we have that group, I'm not sure we have any parent involvement on the group you described, I don't think we do.
I think some of the folks happen to be parents of Milford students as well, but, but they're not, they're not just parents.
Right.
They're faculty members or administrators.
And so I have a couple of names I'd like to, can say, have considered on the list of people who've reached out to me, that would be helpful for us.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Scott, second from Joe, all in favor? Okay, and the last one is, uh, Jen, to your point, from the school committee side, I would like to set up a committee for the reuse or our version of what we need to do with Middle School East. Um, we haven't done that, we haven't looked at it from the school's side. Scott is our representative, he's done a great job, as you heard his report tonight, um, we've gotten one report, we've got another one coming, but as John has said many, many times, you know, we, as a school committee, and with our school administrators, you know, we really haven't, as a group, a group of seven people have not really said, what do we wanna do with this building? Do we have a use for this building, and it may come right back to the report that we're gonna get. But I think as a, as a school committee, we need to set up a committee to look at the uses that we may have for that building. With that, I'll open it up to discussion. John?
Yeah, I, I thank you for, um, that suggestion, I mean, I made my, uh, you know, my, my ideas known last meeting, but I think, you know, we need to see what we can do, what are the benefits and what are the costs, and what are the benefits not only to us and to the community? So, without really expounding any more than I did the last meeting, uh, I, you know, I fully support that committee, Subcommittee.
Quick, quick question, who?
Sure.
Is it you, who else is from the, the school committee that's on it, just you and?
On your time, yeah.
So, um, currently that's, that's, that's representing, um, school interests
Yep.
in, in some version or another, or something that we have ultimate purview for, uh, there's actually three members. So it's myself is the school committee liaison, Dr. Tremblay is the superintendent of the schools, who is, so my role is to be the liaison for us as an elected board.
Right.
And the, and the budget and policy components that are within our purview. Uh, Dr. Tremblay, whose role is the superintendent of schools, is to be the educational voice of, here are the educational needs and uses of the Milford Public Schools, um, and, and be the ed- be that educational piece. So that a lot of what you're proposing for this group is actually Dr. Tremblay's role in the Middle School East, three is committee that's been informed by former Selectmen, Dino de Barbalmas. Um, and the third one is actually Lenny Oliver, I'm sorry, Lenny Marcone, wow, that's a name from the past. Uh, Lenny Marcone, I know, right? Lenny Marcone, um, as the head of community use, which ultimately is under the purview of the school committee. Um, and his role is to, uh, provide feedback. Um, and his role is to, uh, provide feedback and potential need, um, you know, we talked, we heard tonight of potential use of the gym. Well, that's part of what Lenny is, what Lenny is there to provide, as well as the transportation piece that he also is involved in, as well as all the community pieces that he's involved in. So that's what his role is. So when you think about our ultimate overview as, and representation from the schools in one version or another, there's actually three members of the thirteen total, um, that are actually there. It's actually, the, the schools are actually the most heavily represented group of anybody in that group. The finance committee has one member, the selectmen have one member.
And, and I would assume once Bob goes, you're gonna take his spot, maybe?
Assuming the board's still going.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm just trying to find out.
Assuming that committee's still going.
Yeah, your final reports do may, they may not be a place to take.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it may not matter.
That's what, that's just where, that's where my brain's thinking, so like if one goes, who's gonna take the spot?
Then we would actually make, we would make the recommendations, 'cause ultimately it's appointed, um, the appointment, and I would, we would certainly wanna verify this, um, I don't anticipate it would be an issue. The appointment was actually, um, not Dr. Bob Tremblay, it was the superintendent of schools.
Okay.
So.
Okay, good point, yeah.
So it effectively then becomes, we changed the name, but the title's still the same, right? So that, because the title, the seat was actually what was appointed rather than the person.
So, so I wasn't here at the last meeting and I read the minutes, and I, I'm just curious, is, I, I get the, the understanding for the Subcommittee with us, 'cause I'm just about out of the loop as everybody else is, maybe, I don't know. Are we just not getting the feedback from you guys that we should be getting, or are we not having these conversations? Like, why couldn't we put these on future agendas just to talk about the reuse and what our plans would be? I'm not saying that the, the Subcommittee's a bad idea by any stretch of the means, I think it's a great idea, I don't know. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, you know, eight Subcommittees. That's my concern.
There's a lot of committees, but there's a lot going on right now, John, that we need to keep our eyes focused on, you know? And I, and again, I go back to, I think we need to as a school committee, and, and that's, that's all of us.
Right.
We need to sit down now and start studying and saying, is there really a use for that school in our district or in this town? And before we say, you know, we're gonna surrender to, to the town. And, and that may come, that, that report that Scott's talking about may come, we may do our own independent and say, you know what? You're a hundred percent right. But, and I feel that we as seven elected officials also should have the opportunity to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could, um, you know, for us to look at it as a group, and we could keep talking about it every meeting, but it's really not appropriate, if, if we wanna delve into an option, for me to approach the principal of the high school and ask on the behalf of the committee without a Subcommittee being formed, or likewise with community use or anyone else. So, you mean, it wouldn't be appropriate for seven of us to start asking different, um, strains of the, of the school system what their thoughts are without there being a formal Subcommittee?
I agree, I guess I was just trying to get a little bit more.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Mike, if I could just make, one more, just one more comment.
Sure.
Uh, it, one of the main, um, drivers behind this is, we're gonna, at some point, we're gonna be asked to make a decision whether to declare that building a surplus, right, as, as a committee. And from, at least from my perspective, I don't feel like we have all the information yet to make an informed decision and be comfortable making that decision. So, um, yeah, at the last meeting, I think Bob had mentioned getting together with, um, with Carrie and a few others to talk about, um, what are the potential, um, benefits of, um, what are the potential benefits for you to free up space across the district by moving things like central office, community use, all those groups over to Middle School East? How can we benefit that, how can we benefit from that by expanding pro, programs? And that's a piece that we haven't really gotten information on. So, um, this committee, what I, what I would, what I would envision this committee working collaboration with the Middle School East reuse committee and providing them a lot of that data and a lot of that information so that we can then make a truly informed decision and be comfortable with that decision.
Go to John, ladies first, ladies first.
Thank you. Was there any information in the preliminary NEASC report about space use at the high school? It may be premature to ask this, but.
Space was addressed, there was a concern about the, uh, you know, Milford High School since nineteen seventies really hasn't, you know, the spaces, shining stars encroached upon the basement, so even though one, upon a time was used for the, you know, the town, um, it's the highway department.
Parks Department.
I'm sorry, Parks Department. And the, uh, the space that were central offices had been, you know, the high school nursing suite and other kinds of things used for the, at the high school. So, uh, there was addressed as the number of ancillary groups that are using and encroaching upon high school space and the, and the need for that to, to free up, so. And I also had a discussion with Carrie about, wasn't sure what to call, we, we sort of got into this, um, the, uh, the issue around technology, if you recall, we had the Technology Task Force and Technology Subcommittees, and we began to get a little bit muddy as to who was on what and for what, toward what end. So I worry about sort of the reuse piece having the same, um, the same potential problem. But I did ask Carrie to sort of think about innovative ways of, if you were to regain that space, you know, how do you envision that as a high school expansion? And, you know, we can look very quickly at the five thousand square foot that we need for, you know, this, the, uh, central office space, special education, community school use, family resource center, all that constitutes, I think it's about fifty-five hundred.
Yeah, our version, our, our purpose was about five thousand square.
Yeah, about five thousand square feet.
It was total twelve thousand square feet for total town use in, in that, in that option one, if you will.
Right, and then beyond that, as to what sort of innovations, if we're looking to, uh, knowing that we have a, a real interest in more vocational programming or, or other kinds of interests, work with that, would that be something that would happen here? Would that be better served on a, on a Middle School East campus building? All kinds of other considerations. So I've asked Carrie, I'll think about it sort of, is it innovation, Middle School East innovation or school innovation? So, I guess for, the question I have, um, on here, we have Middle School East as a standing agenda item, we also have a Middle School East reuse as a Subcommittee. So I guess I'm envisioning is, uh, Middle School East reuse sort of town, and then Middle School East reuse school?
That's correct, Scott'll have it.
Okay.
Yep.
But not keeping the standing item, then move, move it into the Subcommittee, so, or do you wanna still have a?
No, I would leave that standalone, that's, that's always been there for Scott. That's the community.
But, and then this reuse here is, is a school reuse Subcommittee, I say?
Yes.
Okay.
John?
Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, there's so many options to explore, but, you know, looking at the example Dr. Tremblay just gave, you know, maybe move central, central office down there, but maybe central office needs no renovations to stay here, so move, maybe move, instead of trying to put programs there, you, you put a program down there that doesn't need renovation. It's just so many variables and options, that, that's why I feel so strongly that we need a, a Subcommittee.
Okay.
Yep, so just the two things that I, I would say, um, that I have questions on with that is, is I would ask, that within that component, uh, within, if it's just the decision in the favor of the committee, that that Subcommittee moves forward, that a piece of that charter be views of the financial impact. 'Cause through all the pieces, and I think all the value, I think there's a lot of value add that was just provided by all the members of, of the reason for it. The one piece that was not included was the financial impact, which, if we were to maintain that building, just the simple maintenance of that building, uh, is substantial.
Yeah.
Um, so, I, there's, there's some cost impact, it's not all about money, it's, and I understand that. But there is some, some potentially significant budget impacts for us, and given that our two primary charges as a school committee in budget and policy, um, it, it's fifty percent of what we do. So, uh, so that was the first piece, I just asked that that be included in the charter, um, if it were to move forward. The second piece is, and I guess it's just more of a question, just understanding, because what I think I'm hearing is a big piece of what that committee is, is what are the potential educational uses of that building and understanding what the educational needs are of the building. And I guess where I'm, I'm a little unclear on this is, and I'm, and I'm asking is, um, I mean, that's, that's the role of the superintendent of the schools, is, is to provide the educational direction for the Milford Public Schools as a, as our, as our chief executive officer. That is their job, that's their, sure, that's what we hired them for, that's what we hired Bob for nine years ago, that's what we hired Kevin for in about ninety dicks. So, if what this, that piece of it sort of feels like a little bit is, is, are we working, and, and I'm not, I'm not clear on this, is the sense that we've not gotten, 'cause to your point, Joe, is, is you're not sure you've gotten that information? Then what that tells me is, is then, then we've got, that's, since that's Bob's job, then Bob's not doing his job on that committee. 'Cause that's Bob's job, is to provide the educational direction of the schools. And, and I'm not saying you aren't, I'm just, what I'm saying is, is, is that, 'cause realize what you're saying is, is we wanna be able to understand the educational direction of the schools in the educational potential future. That's the job of the Superintendent, and, and space, and that's part of the job of the chief executive, which is our Superintendent of Schools. That's, that is his job description. I don't feel that way, I feel as, 'cause I've asked you straight out, what are the educational potentials, what are the educational needs? So I, I wanna make sure that I go on record saying, I feel as though I've, we've been provided that information on a regular basis, but there's been feedback that says that, that information has not been provided. So I guess that's, the question is, is, is the sense that Bob is, because that is Bob's job, that Bob's not doing his job in that process?
So that's not what I said.
Okay.
At all. Bob was asked to look at the educational needs of Middle School East.
Nope, he was asked for the school district. Very clearly, he was asked actually what are the?
As were you, as a member of that committee, so don't put all this on Bob.
No, 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 I was asked for what are the school committee needs, and my job was to be the liaison in communications.
For the schools.
For the school committee, not for the schools. That was my charter, because I don't, to be honest with, because that's not my role. My role is to be the liaison for the school committee, provide feedback from the seven-member board, not the educational need and uses of the building, that's not our role. Our role as a school committee is to provide budget and policy. The educational needs, uses, and future of the Milford Public Schools, as is any public school, is the direction and responsibility of one individual, it's the Superintendent of Schools. That is not our role, our role as the school committee is not to decide the educational needs and uses of the public schools. Our job is to provide budget and policy, those are our jobs, Superintendent of Schools is education.
Mr. Chairman. But they, just to, just to, um, maybe provide a little bit of interpretation on my part. So there's a difference between the, the need of the school department and maybe the interests or opportunities of the school department. I think that's the distinguishing piece, you know? If you asked me today, hey Bob, in your capacity as Superintendent of Schools, who's gonna advise the Middle School East reuse town committee on the future reuse of that building, do you have an educational need? If that's the question, educational need, the question is, maybe, or no. Because we're making it work now with what we have in the space. Does that mean that it's down the road, we couldn't expand? Does that mean that we couldn't retain more students who might move out of district if we were innovative? Well, that's a different question. Question is, could we use that space? Is an entirely different question than do we need the space? And I made that clear, um, to this board, and I made that very clear to the Middle School East reuse, uh, committee. My understanding, my job on that, my role on that board, as I understand it, was to bring educational ideas and opportunities for consideration, for vetting. And I was very clear from the very beginning that, and, and with that board in particular, that this school, Middle School East would be available for reuse consideration if and only if or when it's declared surplus. Understanding that this Milford School Committee retains the right until the point that it's no longer needed as a school building to say, you know what, we're gonna have and keep that. So, I think what happened is you have a, a town committee that was, was appointed by then, uh, selectman member, Dino de Barbalmas, that's forward-thinking about what might happen. Eventually, the school will have to be a decision, what do we make, let's put a group together, um, so that we're not left with a building being mothballed and having a vacant building on Main Street, so that you could, to the extent you could, have that building be reused for something around the time that was no longer needed as Middle School East. That said, things do happen, things do change over the period of time and demands shift. We weren't considering at the time, uh, ten years ago in the long-range plan, that we'd have, uh, a number of school choice students leaving at a rate that's greater than the number, you know, that we had then, it was an even, even number. So is there an opportunity to innovate using that space? The answer would be yes. So I think that's the difficulty here, and I think what I'm hearing, Scott, from the committee, is, you know, putting a Subcommittee to sort of brainstorm, to make sure that before we give a building up, because it's very unlikely we'd get a school building again down the road, after having come out on the, on the, in the, on the heels of a sixty million dollar elementary school. So before we give it up and say, we really don't need this, knock it down, sell it, whatever you wanna do with it, make it, give it to office space, let's consider every possible angle. We've not done that because I couldn't tell you tomorrow, if I said, um, we have an interest in expanding chapter seventy vocational programs and we wanna add a facilities management program, that's just an example. Uh, so BBT doesn't offer that, our practice doesn't mean we have to continue this practice. Our practice has been to offer programs that are components and that aren't competing with directly BBT, uh, if that was an interest. Now, I couldn't tell you, 'cause it took us three years to get hospitality and tourism management off the ground, I certainly don't wanna be out there saying, yes, we absolutely have a need for that school for a facilities management, when there's so many steps that have to happen that takes far longer than could be determined in a s, in between now and, and the opening of a New Woodland School. Is there the potential for that? Absolutely. But it's hard to sell or to maintain, uh, an operational cost for a building on an idea without an actual plan in place. But the timing of it doesn't allow for that, you have to really assess the need, uh, in the industry before you can determine a seventy-four program. So this is a lot of more work that would have to be done with that. So I think the idea of a Subcommittee is a good one to sort of think about as an example, is that a viable space? We know it's a viable space for education, so we use that today for that reason. And is it a viable consideration to say, well, why don't we move the, uh, pathways program? Which is at the high school, as an example, to free up, uh, space at the high school. This, so that's, I think, to the point you were making, John, earlier, that you might have an opportunity that may not necessarily be moving, uh, expanding, uh, moving a central office necessarily, but maybe moving a different program to that space. The, the optimist in me, and I think this goes back now to this whole Middle School East town-based group, was if you could bring, and it's, it's, it's a perfect world, if you bring together members of the finance committee and the board of selectmen and the school committee, and everybody's working in the best interest, in the best possible reuse and the interest of the town, that that group together will arrive at a conclusion that says the best possible reuse of this space is this, whatever it may be. It's up to, um, that group to decide that, if, but again, it's premature, because it presupposes that this group says, we don't need it anymore. So I think you have that challenge, and I think that's why it's coming to be one of those, well, it's Bob's role, it's his role. We're here today because of just that reason, and I could have predicted it would have come to that. So do we need the space? No, in my view, no. Do we have an opportunity to use that space if it's available to us? Without a question, we do. That's the, that's the problem, that's the, it's best I can characterize it, that's the challenge in front of us. I apologize for going on too long with that.
Yeah, um, to Scott's first point, I think financially, it, it absolutely, absolutely needs to be part of the charter of the Subcommittee if it is formed. Uh, and I think I briefly touched on it when talking about cost plus benefit, but I certainly didn't emphasize it.
If you did, I apologize, I missed cost.
Um, but more to the point, this, the last five or ten minutes of discussion, I think highlights why we need a committee. I mean, I could give you a, a simple proposal that, you know, we look to renting out the educational portion of the building. We look to retain the gym and the cafeteria, uh, and if we can become cross-neutral, that's great, right? Except for then we have what happens to the facility in five or ten years, what capital items does it need? So I think it's, it's so much broader, we could, we could spend, and we should spend hours or days or weeks or months discussing all the options without even talking about the educational portion, which is probably, you know, maybe the most arguably important, arguably most important topic. So, um, I, I'd like to, you know, maybe either, you know, vote to form the Subcommittee and then, you know, go in whichever direction that leads us, rather than continue.
If, if, if I may say, what I've had in the last couple of weeks, I've had, not a lot of people, but I've had some Milford citizens come up to me and say, why would you give up that building? When you built the brand-new high school, now I wasn't here, you guys were. When you built the brand-new high school, you idled the old high school, and you held on to it. You didn't sell it, you didn't knock it down, and then years later, you were able to renovate that building and reopen it as a school. Why would you do, why would you give up that existing building as a school? And then I explained the reasons and why, but that's the kinda, you know, the topics that are being discussed. So I think from a school committee perspective, we need to make sure that we're, and it's not that we're not getting the right information, we just wanna have it and given to us in a different way.
Yeah, no, like I said, I just wanna make sure I understood the, the question.
Yeah, so, and with that.
I just had one more.
Sure.
I hadn't thought, would there be any, I, I think it's semantics, but would there be any value in not calling it a reuse Subcommittee? Would there be value in calling it a future programming Subcommittee or, um, I don't know, innovation Subcommittee?
It's not reuse, it's Milford's school, Milford School Subcommittee.
Mil, Milford School Subcommittee.
So Mil, Middle School East or?
East, yeah.
Middle School East Subcommittee.
Yeah. It's not a reuse, it's a Subcommittee that we're forming on the sub, on the, that's gonna evaluate what we think we should do with that building. So it's not carrying the same name as the committee that, that Dino put together.
Okay.
So, I guess no matter what you call it, I think that we'd wanna make, I think the first charge of that committee would be to examine our current programming and potential. So, in some ways, current programming and potential may go actually beyond what we end up doing with Middle School East, so. It may just be semantics in terms of what you call it, but I think what we wanna do is have a real broad look at what, what could we be doing and what are the possibilities, um, whether now or in the future. And I actually think it ties in fairly well to the Marketing and Communication Subcommittee, because it's all part of, how do we make Milford the best that it can be? If we have this space, the space is one thing, because we have it now. If we have this space, the space is one thing because we have it now, but what, what we're really doing is looking at the schools and trying to figure out what, what could we be doing to really capitalize on what we have and.
I agree with that to a point if I can. You know, right now we're talking about that as a facility. It, you know, it's not going to be a Middle School East, or it may not be a Middle School East in the future. You know, we may need that space if we, if we don't declare it surplus for, you know, surplus space if we're going to renovate a school in the future. That would tie into, you know, what, what is this building going to need in five years, ten years, fifteen years? You know, the long-range educational plan started, what, twenty years ago? So maybe we, you know, we name it something to do with facilities, facility, facilities redevelopment or some, you know, I, I think that's a good point, not to necessarily use that nomenclature.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, for just one last piece. Is it worth, and I think, you know, Joe, you had mentioned this over the last couple of months or so, and I think we are at this point, I know we've all talked about this in a number of cases. I think there's a, a broader issue that I think also does need to be addressed, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and that is the formation of, and this may fit into this piece. The formation of a new long-range educational plan. And I think that's going to be, that is a tremendous amount of work. This may fit in as a piece of that.
Well, I think that may come out of this.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's going to be a piece of it, most definitely. Because I think there's, you know, we saw as we went through our budget piece, there's some facilities needs that are going to be coming up soon, particularly with the high school. Yeah, and we were, we're looking, I think our, I think our long-range planning for capital is potentially up as much as five million dollars for a new roof, just for the building that we're currently sitting in. So I, I think, I, I would ask, you know, whether it's within the, whether it's combining these all together. But I, I would say that there's a, I, I believe that there is now a need. As our current long-range education plan candidly will sunset with the opening of Middle School, uh, can, apologize. With, of, of the New Woodland School, I do believe that there is a need for a formation of a long-range, of a new long-range education plan, which is generally done with the school committee, with the, with the superintendent of schools. I, I believe that would also need to be done from a subcommittee perspective. And this may be part of that educational piece. And with the charter for that group is, first item for agenda is, is the potential, potential use for Middle School East and have that actually combined into one. Is something that I, I would be interested in seeing as part of that. And actually make it a much broader topic than, because I think middle, I, I think these are all valid points. I think they're all pieces that do need to be discussed. I think there's a much broader issue and that's.
There is, but right now we want to focus on that, that building within our.
No, I got that. But that's where I'm at, I guess. What I ask is, is do we create a, do we make this a, do we make this a long-range educational plan subcommittee? With a charter saying first order of issue is, is addressing Middle School East? And have that just be, be the directive of this committee for that subcommittee within the con, within the, the overarching piece of long-range education plan.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of merit to that discussion because, you know, the, the piece of the long-range educational plan that hasn't been executed is the, the last piece, which, which was renovating the basement space at, here at the high school. So that may, that may very well fit into, you know, something that develops out of Middle, Middle School East.
Joe?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you. That, that's something that we need to start working on. I, I know Kevin and I just had some, some brief conversations about it. We, we need some pieces to fall into place, right? So Kevin needs to assume the superintendent role, Craig needs to assume the assistant superintendent role, we got the, the director of instructional technology coming on, the new principal at Woodland. So I think we need to wait for the dust to settle there and then start to tack. Because that is, to your point, that is going to be a big project, right? That's going to involve a lot of different stakeholders. So this allows us to sort of start doing some of the preliminary legwork, but eventually bringing some of these committees together to start working on that long-range plan makes a lot of sense.
With that, then I have a motion. Motion from Joe, second from Jim. All in favor? Would you have one proposed?
I don't think any of them.
Oh, all in favor.
Do we have a name though?
I, I was going to ask this question. I don't know, Erica got it. I, I got two or three to go last. Did you get a name? It's middle, I, I got, the last version was Middle School, it was just Middle School East.
Middle School East.
Middle School East Subcommittee.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yes, that's correct. That's what it's called. If we didn't build a new school, we wouldn't have this conversation. Okay, with that.
A ship's sail.
Kidding.
And I apologize, bear with me, I'm gonna, so starting with policy. Jen is going to remain on policy and I'm going to join Jen on policy. Wellness, I'm going to stay on the wellness committee and Joe Calery has expressed an interest to join me there. Middle School East reuse, Scott, you're going to remain on there by yourself as you know, because you have to. Well, I'm saying is that.
But that's actually.
What I mean is, you've done such a great job. How's that?
That's actually.
Because we need you to.
Item number seven reuse.
You all lie to make friends, but thank you.
This will become the school east, which is the new.
No.
This reuse, stake it at Scott.
Right, that's normally where he does it.
But he'll do his up here and this will be the new.
Correct. And it's, uh, no, I appreciate that.
Yep, got it.
Making sure I got it too.
Okay, Woodland School Building Committee is going to be Jen. Technology Task Force is going to be Joe Calery and Jim LaGore. Climate, Culture, and Morale is going to stay Joe Marius by himself. The Budget Committee that will be working with the Finance Committee throughout the year is going to be Joe Marius and John Erickson. The Marketing and Communications Committee is going to be Joe Marius and Jim LaGore. And the Middle School East is going to Scott and John Erickson. I think it's vital that you stay on both sides of that.
Okay.
Okay? And is everybody okay with that?
Serve the pleasure of the chair.
Okay. All right, and with that, we'll start with reports. Policy.
Do we have a first read for next meeting?
Um, I don't think we, yeah. I don't know if we'll have a, will we have a first reading for next round of meetings?
Was it the religion one?
Religious observance policy.
Okay, so where that stands right now is, we had a meeting with the leadership team on that, that policy, which will be interesting, and bring for discussion to their school councils as a starting point. So that right now is being circulated with school councils for conversation. And then I'll get feedback from these, the building administrators to then bring that back to the policies of committee for consideration as we look at redrafting language. So that's in, that's in review, I guess, as a status.
Okay, Wellness, we did have a meeting. I'm sorry, you all said?
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of the other one we had to do, is physical restraint.
The social media, um, usage.
And we have that being drafted by our technology team.
Which we're meeting with tomorrow.
Meeting with tomorrow.
And I think we still have homework ongoing. I don't know if we ever brought closure to that. I know we had some.
We had a discussion, but I think that's, that'll be something I think you can talk about.
It's still ongoing. It's, yeah.
Uh, there's a lot of moving parts with that.
Yeah, right.
You're going to need a bigger desk.
It's all the language that's thrown out there, that's good. Religion.
You're starting, you're starting to wonder why, you, you were wondering initially why your conference table was off, right?
You'll use it quick.
Okay, this Wellness Committee, we did have a meeting. Of course, very exciting about the grant that we read tonight, the twenty thousand dollar grant that's going to help us fund the Wellness Coordinator. We talked quite a bit about different programs for suicide prevention, substance abuse. And I don't want to come off saying that it's a serious problem in the schools. It isn't, but Judy Dagnes and her team are really doing a great job of trying to get ahead of the curve. And, and by bringing in this, this health, you know, this Wellness Coordinator, they're going to be able to do that through screening programs, wellness programs. You know, ta- just general conversations with, with some of the students, so it's, it's a great thing.
Mike, if I may, on that piece, certainly the, the opioid issue that's been going on, and it's, and it's a, it's, it's an unbelievable piece that's obviously been occupying a lot of headlines. And I'm not referring to Milford headlines, I'm referring nationally and certainly statewide. It's, there's, there's a lot of issues that have been going on. With that being said, will that be also in coordination? I think the Chief of Police has done a phenomenal job with talking about how they're, how they're helping direct people who are experiencing issues to the right resources, how law enforcement is handling things, how there's reporting and everything like that. Will that be worked in, will the Chief of Police be a part of that?
I don't know if the Chief of Police is going to be, but we had discussions about.
Included within that process. That'd be great. I'd like to see that.
Yeah, and they've gone as far as they've, they've partnered with Boston Children's Hospital with a program for adolescents break free from depression. As depression, of course, is, is in the district as well. So just a lot of, sometimes it's, it's hard to sit there and listen to, you know, what we're talking about, what's going on in our district. And I'm, I'm going to go back to saying, I bring this up many times, that there, there were documented cases where they know that children need help, but they're not getting the help they need because of home situations. You know, so the poor child is, you know, so they're really on top of it. They're, they're working very well with it and, and it's going to be a great thing. Of course, we've got Health, Healthy Kids and Wellness Week coming up in April. It's April eleventh through the fifteenth, and then there's a whole activity that goes with that. Appropriate activities that are going to be done during the week of wellness with Lenny and community use. This is another subject that came up, talked about the transgender environment. And the law is changing. And what we, as a district, and Bob maybe could speak a little bit to this, but I'll touch on what we talked about, is what we have to offer in the schools as far as restrooms. One of the things we talked about is at graduation, a lot of communities now are blending away from ours, it's traditionally red and white, so you know the boys, you know the girls. A lot of the communities now are going to one color. Kerry had a great idea, one color maybe with a white sash, something like that. Ours for this year are already ordered, they're already coming, so this year in Milford will be traditional red, traditional white. But in the following year, and they are going to look into it, is, is it, you know, a better way to handle the graduation process, you know, with the transgender student? If we go to one color and then put some trim on it or something to throw the white in, you know, so, so we talked quite a bit about that. Then we had some updates on Health Night at Stacy. We talked about the free lunch program that's going to happen again this year in the summertime. And that's really, I mean, we talked about a lot, but those are the highlights of, of what we went on. The thing that I really stay focused on, to me, is, is the, is the substance abuse and the, and the mental health issues. I think they really need to be watched. And, and, you know, the, we always talk about is that, and I think something that we need to work on is that, you know, we don't have enough adjustment counselors, you know. We know there are students that need help, we get them the initial help, and then because we don't have the help, they don't get the help. And I think that's an area that we really need to, I know it's difficult, but I need, it's, it's an area we really need to, to look at.
One, one of my goals for next year, like, you know, I know you guys are all interested in this, it's an exciting preview. It's, it's tying, creating a social emotional learning com- committee. And we've done that with a lot of our, like, content areas like English and math.
Yeah.
But we were, and we've, we've kind of started the process this year, but we really want to do something to really dig in. What are we offering pre-K through twelve? You know, where are our strengths? What are our needs? And then we can really assess, you know, what, it, it's almost like a sub-strategic plan, because I think it'll tie into our next strategic plan as well. But we're seeing more and more, and, and it's not just Milford, it's, it's, it's.
Oh, it's not Milford alone, oh.
It's, it's been the big topic with superintendents this year. But it's something we really want to dig into, and I think we have a lot of great people in place and a lot of great programs. But how do we make sure it's seamless across the board? And we're doing that in our content areas. The social emotional well-being is a critical piece of that. And we want, you know, students, if, if, if that piece isn't in place, it's very difficult to get into the math, the science, the social studies and the English.
Well, thanks. It'll be a big, it'll be a big piece of what we're looking at next year.
Any questions?
Just one question.
Yes, Jen.
The grant-funded nurse, is that a part-time nurse, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And do we, does that person have a specific assignment, like a place where she'll be housed or, or he?
Uh, that's a great question.
Or is that, maybe that's.
I can, I can probably, just by reading Judy's notes, we were awarded the grant for a part-time wellness coordinator. This position was proposed for a nurse who would be responsible for a variety of health and wellness initiatives dealing with behavioral health, substance abuse. So, yeah, she's got a chair.
And just to give an update on that, we were, Kevin and I were attending an event.
For Jag.
Is this yesterday?
Yes, this morning, yes. Felt like last week, right?
I was just asleep in my car. We attended at the Doubletree Juvenile Advocacy Group, right? So we had Milford Police and all that there. We had a, one of the keynote speakers there, Jim Wahlberg. And there's a, a video that he has produced, and Mark Wahlberg's brother, I think brother, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Brother. Uh, he produced a call, Only If. It was a very powerful presentation that we observed. And Meg Bosito was there also, Judy Dagnes.
A number of our faculty were actually in the room.
Councilors of all the schools. It was very powerful and, so I mentioned to the, to, to Jim Wahlberg that we'd like to, now is the time to get this video here for us to see.
And the focus is opioid addiction.
Yeah, it's very, very powerful. It's, it's council saying, oh, we should bring this to school next year, and, not next year, we should bring this now. We have time now before all these, end of the year, when you have the social host liability and issues of. And this, this particular video was around a, kind of a pill party. The idea, kids would bring their own pills and you could almost envision any of our kids, and these are, you know, the way it's portrayed, just these sort of good, high-achieving kids going to this party, bringing pills. And, and the outcome, as you can imagine. And then the, the testimonial at the end of, of family members, I'll give you one example of this, when they were putting this film to production, he had, Jim had asked for families who might be interested in being part of this filming. And they came and there was a, it was a blizzard that, last year, and they filmed it, and two hundred and fifty families came and brought pictures of their deceased child. And, and, and it became one of the most powerful events for them because they were there and you see at the end of the video, they're holding a picture of their, of their deceased child. And they had it filmed at the church, and as we understand it from the presentation yesterday, the sort of the behind-the-scenes was, it was just so powerful to have these two hundred and fifty people in this church all grieving together and reliving a funeral portion of the, of the video. That he said, listen, we're done filming, but we don't have to go. The church is here, we can stay here, we can, we can, we can talk, we can pray, we can hug, whatever it takes, we have this space. And it became this really therapeutic opportunity. It was truly moving for me, so I committed Milford to having a screening of this, this spring. He's going to fly up from Florida, no charge, not going to, we don't have to pay the flight, we don't have to pay the hotel. He'll come up, stay, he'll do a pre-screening discussion about the video and then have a Q and A with families. So the, the challenge I would ask, you know, and put out to the community is, it's important for us as a community to talk about this. And not, as Milford does well, is not just skirt past it. Take the really difficult issue, put it in front of us and have an honest discussion about it, because it could happen to any of our children. Any of our kids could be involved in a situation like that. The challenge though for us i- is getting parents to come out. You know, how do you attract people unless you hold it over their head, say, we're not going to give you your report card unless you're, you know, you hate to make it punitive. But at some point, we've got to find a way to engage the parents in the discussion, even when they think that their child is above that. Uh, that's, but we're looking at that together regionally, and you should expect to have more information in the coming weeks on that. And I bring this up now because the wellness nurse is going to take the lead on that with me, with Kevin and with Judy to drive this forward district-wide. So watch for more information on that. I want to put it out as an early advisory to the, to the, to the town. We need you to be part of this discussion. Certainly Milford Police are part of that discussion as we get into conversations around Narcan. And it's, this is just a, this is just a hot topic everywhere. And one that we're going to take on as a school department.
Well, I think to touch on that, Bob, real quick, and then I'll, I'm sorry I let you guys do your reports, but two other things that came out of that meeting was when we were talking about children and they end up in the emergency room, the first thing I said, gee, in this area, where do they end up? And the, the woman from the hospital said, what do you mean? I said, well, what hospital do they go to? She said, sometimes they're in Milford Hospital in the emergency room for up to two weeks. I said, excuse me? She said, and even though the hospital is big and beautiful, the emergency room, there's now a designated area for that person. They could be in that emergency room for up to two weeks before they're placed in a hospital. And she said, the other problem that we have is that, to Scott's point, the opiate problem, she said, is that as soon as you A administer Narcan, Narcan, or you get them in the emergency room, their thought processes, they're in serious trouble, and they want both. They want to get out of there. And what they're trying to do, and you've heard Chief Olafland say on the radio many times, is that they offer you treatment. And if you are willing to accept treatment, then most cases will drop the charges as long as you get into treatment from Milford Hospital. And she said the same thing, we try to, you know, get these people to understand that you, you're lucky you're alive right now. You're not in trouble, but you need help. You know, so they stop this flight, you know, type of thing. But I, I was just shocked to see that somebody would be waiting in an emergency room for two weeks sometimes to, to get a bed in a facility to get some help. So. Scott, I think you pretty much did.
I, I'd say it again if you'd like. Probably forego it for a second time.
All right, and Woodland School, of course, Jen, you just got appointed, so we'll give you a pass.
For the next meeting?
That's right. Technology Task Force?
I think we covered it with.
Okay.
Kevin.
Joe, climate and culture?
Yeah, so just underscore the point that Bob made at, at the beginning of the meeting, the feedback that we got from the EAS is that the, the culture morale here at the high school is, is exceptional. And that was, that was great to hear from that, from that independent voice. We did have a meeting this afternoon. As all, all of you know, the three areas of focus right now for that committee are communication, discipline in facilities, from. um, discipline in facilities. Uh, from a commu- communication perspective, the feedback that we're getting from the committee is that, um, they're seeing some improvements and that there are, it are open lines of communication there across the district. Um, from a facilities perspective, there's some projects that I believe are going to be happening over April vacation to address some of the feedback that we got there. Um, and we got some positive feedback from the discipline perspective, that the, some of the, the teachers feel that things are better this year than what they saw last year. So, continue to make progress, and, uh, the committee continues to plug away at it.
I'd have to agree with you, Joe. I, uh, have, we've left our meeting. I, I stayed for the four o'clock meeting. So I just took off through the high school by myself, not realizing that there were teachers in the rooms.
Oh, yeah.
And there's definitely, they're, they're, they're happy people, I don't know. And they're excited about what they teach. And I actually had two teachers come up to me and say, when I first started, I didn't think I would finish my career at Milford High School. And yes, I most definitely will finish my career at Milford High School. But a, as you're watching the corridors, maybe you guys can appreciate this because you went here, I think it was Jose, um, took a bunch of pictures, not just sports pictures, you know, like kids in class, sports, drama, chess, or whatever. Put them in really nice frames. You can see some of them out here tonight when you, if you look up in the lobby. But he scattered them around the corridors of the high school. It's just really, just a, really a nice effect. And a, and a shout out to Rob Quinn. This building's immaculate. You know, we were here Sunday. It's, and still is tonight. It's a, it's immaculate. You know, so I, I agree with you, Joe. It's, the culture's just really positive, very in the morale. Okay, School Liaison Reports. Anybody making it to any schools? No problem. That's okay. We're all busy. Busy time of year. Future agenda items? Yes, sir.
Um, not so much an agenda item. I know in the past, we've done this in years past. Uh, we, we haven't done this over the last year. Um, so a, as an example, um, there are different months throughout the year that represent different focuses and things like that. Some of them are, are school-appropriate, and some maybe not, not as much so. Um, April is actually Autism Awareness Month.
Okay.
Um, I know in the past, what we've done is we've actually gotten ribbons just in recognition of that. Um, I would just ask if we can, if we can find a way to be able to get some, some autism puzzle piece ribbons, um, for, and ask that school committee members wear that during, uh, during the month of April. Obviously, we have an, we have an additional meeting this month, just in recognition of that, and also just going forward as there are, um, so there's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, there's, there's a number of, of, of ones that, um, I, I ask that we, you know, we just, we just begin to recognize that as we go forward.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, that's a good idea. Any other future agenda?